Matt, you do have a phone.
Awesome. Shanti Wolf.
Hi, Shanti.
Hi, Shanti.
Hello, hello.
Hi, Shanti.
Hello, how you doing?
He's a popular guy.
Yeah.
That's right. Been awhile since I've been on one of these meetings.
Yep.
Alright, I have six o'clock, so I'm calling the meeting to order. And I have a little public service announcement at the beginning here. Um, as Chairman of the Board of Selectmen for the town of Newton, New Hampshire, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12, pursuant to Executive Order 2020-4, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe or listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that we are utilizing free conference call for this electronic meeting. All members of the Board have the ability to communicate during this meeting through this platform. And the public has access to contemporaneously listen, and if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone number. Meeting ID number is 631111. We previously gave the notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the conference call via phone. If anyone has a problem, please email BOSS Secretary, all one word, at NewtonNH.net. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. So with that, uh, I'm going to ask Diane to give us the roll call of who is with us on the phone tonight.
We have Trish, Matt, Charlie, Larry, Chief Elcudino, Chief Jewett, Pete, Jack, Nancy, Terry, Shanti, Kate, and members of the public.
Awesome. Uh, I'm gonna ask Trish to give us her, uh, her meeting rundown of all the calls she's been on during the week, if you would please.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman Matt. Um, well, since we're doing, uh, public announcements, I'm gonna start off with one. Um, Governor Chris Matthews directed the state and U M flags to half-staff in honor of Peace Officers Memorial Day. And he also declares Law Enforcement Memorial Week. And we'll see more and more about that, but since he mentioned it on one of our situation reports, I figured I would share that. Now, you know how in the past, if somebody, a town asks a question and they don't have an answer, they'll give us an update? So I wanna refer to an update from legal, the legal call last Tuesday. And we got a response today. And the question was, if a restaurant has a patio with two walls, but everything else is open, can this count as outdoor dining? And are screens allowed in that area? And the answer was, screens in that area are not allowed. And they said, we'll follow up with you about the patio with walls. Now here's the updated answer. This was a question as to whether an area is considered outdoor dining. If the area has two walls, a budding and exterior surface, and two sides that are not screened and open to the air, these types of questions unfortunately are highly specific to a particular restaurant. And they're recommending that outdoor dining still have to comply with social distancing, but it should be addressed by, here you go, I'm gonna throw people under the bus, the local police, the local fire, and the building department. Shanti, I'm so glad you're here. And they have the discretion to determine whether that particular area qualifies as outdoor or not. There was a lot of conversation about this. Um, unfortunately, as Chairman Matt said last week, we don't have a lot of places in town that we have to worry about, but I thought you'd be interested in that answer. And now up to our, our numbers. So as of today, we have 3,239 positive cases in New Hampshire. That's up 79 since we talked on Monday. We have 1,863 current and 1,234 have completely recovered. That's up three. Unfortunately, we have 142 deaths. That's up nine. 319 hospitalizations. Um, 33,977 are negative. 51 still pending and 30, 3325 still being monitored. Um, as far as our first responders go, we have 22 first responders that have tested positive. 34 are being tracked and quarantined. Out of that 34, 17 is fire and 17 is police. And we have 39 additional in alternative housing. They wanted us to know that 75 additional soldiers were brought in yesterday. Um, they're assisting at call centers, distribution centers, and entry points at various facilities. They wanted us to know that there's no changes in air, rail, or bus service. Delta Airlines is still temporarily suspending operations at Manchester Airport, effective actually today. And this suspension, they think will last until at least September. A lot of times they, they fill it in on online trends and social media. And the discussions that we're hearing is on obviously reopening the schools. Will we? Not. Reaction to PPE coming from China. A lot of local conversation about reopening of the businesses. Talk about summer event cancellations. They're talking about new COVID data, reminding us that we may show more cases, but we're also testing more because of the testing facilities that have opened up. And that is obviously giving us some local impact. They did tell us that military support, they've got 829 members active right now, um, assisting in various locations. They said that, um, they released some updated unprotected exposure document on Friday. And the C B C guidance says that in order to be reintegrated back into the community, somebody without symptoms, here's the guideline, somebody without symptoms for 72 hours after the onset. And it should be 10 days, I'm sorry, 72 hours and 10 days from the onset of the original symptoms without any fever-reducing medicine. And that's not old news. We discussed that, you know, back in the middle of March when this all first started. They talked about releasing a new document relative to COVID-19 testing, regarding active infection testing and active antibodies in testing. They discussed the fact that retail opened, reopened today. Um, actually, some of it was yesterday. One criteria for the reopening was using 50% occupancy load. So we've gotten some inquiries relative to what that number should be. These people have been referred to local fire, police, and buildings for guidance. So if they need assistance, we can call our liaison or we can give you the number to figure out what the exact occupancy should be. But they did say a general rule is 30 square feet per person. Um, it's a general rule and rough amount. Today marked the first day some retailers, golf courses, dentists, and hair salons opened for the first time in eight weeks. And they reminded them that their guidelines before returning to work, employees will have to check their temperatures, submit to health screening upon entering the building, and wear masks. Customers will also be encouraged to wear masks and observe the six feet of social distancing. They also delivered $100,000, $100,000 masks yesterday to the shopping malls that opened. Um, questions on guidance for bummer's and primary alcohol establishments. Am I hearing a funny noise or can you guys still hear me?
Yes, we can still hear you.
Okay, alright.
I muted, I think I muted the person that was causing that bad noise.
Oh, thank you. Sometimes I always get concerned when I hear that, that maybe I'm not, nobody can hear me anymore. Um, thank you, Diane.
You're welcome.
So again, the question was, they wanted, uh, an update for bars and primary alcoholic establishments. And, uh, their answer was, if there is a restaurant or beverage facility with customer seating inside, for instance, and if they are licensed by the liquor commission or local officials, then they are considered a restaurant. They said the guidance on the task force, um, and if anyone wants to go to the task force, they've got the minutes of all their meetings and they're meeting daily. And they've broken it down to like, you know, restaurants, parks, whatever you might want. And if you're curious, it's NHeconomy.com. And you can go there and see everything. You can listen to the recordings or look at their minutes. But they said that the task force website describes how tables have to be arranged in restaurants. The restaurants will need to be strategic and change their layouts if needed. There will still need to be a six-foot distance between tables, but not necessarily between each server and each table. They talked about rooftop dining and it would be allowed as long as they followed guidelines. Then there was a question actually today. They wanted, restaurants wanted to know if they could open outside space if that outside space is shared. Um, I guess the easiest example is, um, let's pretend the parking lot over near like the Hen House and Todd's Place and the little pizza place is shared. And let's say if, uh, let's not pick on the Hen House. Let's say the pizza place wanted to open up space. That's a shared parking lot. So that's kind of what they were alluding to. And they said if that open, opening in the area is shared by multiple tenants, they need approval from the local authorities and also from the landlord. Um, the, as we've said, terms of occupancy rates will go through the local fire department. And in terms of permitting, that might have to happen from the building department as well. They did say they would get back to us to give us a complete answer. And then there was another question that, are there specific metrics being monitored for reopening processes moving forward? And the answer was, and this is, I figured this is something that Matt's always talked about, the, the measurements and the processes and metrics. The Governor talks to the public health every day to get a variety of metrics to make these final decisions. Currently, there's a 30-page report with numerous metrics involved, including deaths, cases, and hospitalizations. And before any final decision is made, they really are gonna look at these metrics to figure out what they're doing. There was a question on, um, specific requirements for municipalities to follow within-town offices for live meetings or police departments. And it, and its recommendation, is it a recommendation? Or is it, is it a requirement? And actually conveniently, Matt, Chairman Matt just talked about this in the beginning. But their answer about opening is the recommendation is to wear a mask anytime that you can't do social distancing. So they're not necessarily saying that, um, the employees in a specific area have to come in with a mask unless it's going to be a, a guidance from that particular entity. They said that it's not a requirement for a town office or police department at this time, but they have to follow social distancing. And then there was another question about a large condo association. And a resident manager wanted to know the latest guidance on quarantining. And actually, can the HOA, the association itself, legally compel residents to self-quarantine for two weeks if they're coming in from another state? And the answer is, there has been no change in the guidance, um, from the Governor on quarantining, and it is recommended, but not required. There was another question, um, they said there is a Chinese restaurant that opened for takeout. And the crowds have been 20 to 30 people or more in the parking lots. And the lines just keep going. And they want to know how to approach this. And the answer is, you can work on best practices to set up a designated standing area for lines. And we recommend you have the local police, here you go, chief, uh, contact the Attorney General if you have continual issues and law enforcement, um, things that have to be discussed, which is probably gonna be talked about on the law enforcement call that, uh, the chief has on Friday. Um, and that's at 10:30, chief, if you didn't get a message on that yet. There was also, um, oh, here, I'm going right into that. A law enforcement call on Friday at 10:30. The information is being sent out to the chiefs. And tomorrow, there's a reminder that we, um, had the E O C and I think Matt and Nancy and Diane, um, and anyone that wants to be on the call. There's a two o'clock call, um, regarding our FEMA and our force account and how we're gonna be dealing with things as far as submitting our documents. Oh, and that being said, there is a document, well, I'll do that at the end. Um, Sunapee Police wanted to know, are yard sales allowed? The answer is, for the time being, no, they're not. This has been asked quite a few times. No, they're not allowed right now. Uh, another town wanted to know about physical training. Can this occur? And the answer is, no, not at this time. Fitness activities are gonna be discussed on the task force this week, but right now, gyms and physical training cannot occur. A fire department wanted to know, or wanted the, um, state to know that they drafted a letter telling a fitness center in their particular town that is open to close, pursuant to the Governor's orders. But they said they're hesitant to send it out if the guidance is gonna change soon. And the answer was, some recommendations were put forth to public health, but we do not expect them to put out anything to the public yet today. Um, and E M D wanted to know, will tomorrow's call address election funds? And the answer is, election funds are not on the agenda. The agenda is very full right now. We'll address your concerns separately. And another town said, well, speaking of elections, will face masks and gloves be provided to municipalities for the elections when we finally have them? And the answer is, we're gonna handle the election separately. The Secretary of State's office is putting a plan together and looking at what types of P P E will be required. And they said, please don't use our survey to request information for elections right now. It's all being discussed. And actually, I'm sure Mary Jo and Cheryl are probably separately discussing it with their entities. Uh, there was another comment on the stay-at-home order 2.0. They said there were, this is an attorney thing. It's gotta be like Matt. Here you go. There are discrepancies. Some wording says "shall", and some wording says "must". And their answer was, thank you for pointing that out. We're gonna take a look at it and get back to you. So that's, that's a typical lawyer answer, Matt.
Oh, yeah.
No comment, no comment.
No comment. I know, that's what my brother would say. So, um, that's the rundown. The only thing that I, I wanted, and I don't know if it's, if I should wait till there's any questions. But we do have a document that is, it has to be signed. It's 32 pages. Um, Matt, you signed some of it. Unfortunately, you didn't get all of it. And actually, the date on it is wrong by one day. And our liaison said, when we submit it, we've gotta make sure we sign everything and make sure everything's correct. And Selectmen, you guys can vote on this. She also said, there's nothing wrong with having the E M D be the designated signer. It can be shared with everyone. But it's, uh, as you saw, Matt, it's long and drawn out. So I'm tossing that out there to you, Selectmen, since we have to redo it anyway. You might wanna consider having, uh, Larry be the designated signer.
So, Mike. So, thank you. So you took the words out of my mouth 'cause I wanted to talk about that first. So could you just give the Board the, a summary in a nutshell as to what we are applying for?
So this is, absolutely. So as you know, um, our first responders got stipends. And this is gonna cover that, the stipends. We probably qualify for, I wanna say it's $117,000 and change. We're gonna be nowhere near that. Um, I think the stipend money that we put in was somewhere around $43,000 or $44,000. But it also covers, it matches the town's benefit portion. So the FICA, the unemployed, the workman's comp, all of that that we usually pay in. This stipend, this, uh, grant, rather, is gonna cover that. And anything else that comes along in that particular category. Um, this call tomorrow at two o'clock is gonna cover it. There's a lot of information that's gonna be discussed on the call. But most importantly, our liaison told Larry and I yesterday that even though we don't have to submit all our time and all our expenses yet, they, she wants us to get this, uh, grant application signed right away, even though this may be going on for a couple of months. Larry, is there anything else I should add to that?
Uh, no, just when we do receive the funds, the Selectmen will have to make a decision whether the ways to pay it out. You could pay it out in three ways. Weekly, uh, for those people who get paid monthly, for those people who get paid bi-weekly, or you could just pay it all out in one lump sum. It's up to the town. So something that the Selectmen probably have to talk to Kim about to see which way is easier. But no payout will be paid until we receive the money.
Right.
So.
I did talk to Kim about it a little bit. And she was hoping to just have to cut one check for each person when we finally get the funds. But again, that's a conversation with the Selectmen and her.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll tackle that one a little further down the road. But, but the, the title of this, um, stipend application is what?
Oh goodness, I didn't bring it with me. Um, I left it at the, at the fire department for you.
Okay.
I have it.
Do you have it?
What's it?
I believe it's Gopher.
Okay, that sounds right. So I'm gonna make.
I think it's Governor's, um, Office for Emergency Relief, something like that.
Yeah, something like that. Thank you, Diane.
Okay, so as Diane said, I'm gonna make a motion uh, for the Board to have, uh, Larry Foot as E M D sign the application on our behalf and submit it as soon as possible. Can I get a second?
Second.
I second.
Alright, Charlie won that race. So let's go around the room. Kate, how do you vote? Uh, Larry?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Matt's an aye, so that's unanimous. So Larry, you can sign away. You have all the power now. So, uh, thank you guys for putting that together. It was very lengthy. So, um, I, I had, uh, I had signed it in advance just for expediency sake, but it sounds like I missed a couple pages. So, uh, we'll get Larry to sign it to limit our, our contact and we should be good to go. And then, as Trish said, down the road, we can start talking to Kim about how we wanna pay it out. So, good news for our first responders, so.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks. So we'll check that one off the agenda. Keeping, uh, just with the COVID-19 subjects right now. Uh, Diane, what else did we have on the agenda for tonight?
Uh, for COVID-19?
Yeah, just to get over with.
Okay. I think the only other thing I have is just to update you on a couple of things, um, with the life safety issues.
Okay.
Um, do you want me to do those now?
Please, yeah.
Okay, so the library is finished. They have, uh, the duress system has been. I'm just gonna mute. I think this, the problem that we're hearing here is, um, Bob Zelinski, I'm gonna mute him. That helps. So for some reason, his phone is screwy. Nope, not him. Okay, one other person, hold on. Alright, how's that?
Uh, thank you, guys.
Good.
That was it.
Alright, so it's another, somebody else, uh, whoever is at plus four digits in the 978 zip code 9240. It's your phone and you are muted. Um, so at the library, they did finish the heat detectors to smoke detectors were applicable. They did an inspection with Chief Elcudino and, uh, E M D Foot. They also fixed the, uh, duress system and they tied it into a cellular, um, transmitter. So it won't depend on the, um, hard lines, hard phone lines. So those two things are done. The other thing is, we set a date to finish the office area at the Town Hall for May 29th, which is a Friday. Um, the other thing on that is, um, I didn't know if, if the Board wanted to go through that fog process again where you clean, you know, we've had the building fog after he was done. That was one question I had for you.
Diane, was that more money?
To do what?
To, to fogging?
Yes. Yep.
And where would that put us at? Just out of curiosity.
I think the last time it was around $700, under $700 to do the Town Hall.
Thank you.
Alright, so does the Board want to pay for another cleaning, uh, post that work being completed?
Is it for all the buildings or just the library? Just the library?
This will just be Town Hall.
Oh, excuse me, okay.
The Town, Town Halls are only occupied, or, you know, partially occupied buildings. So that's why we would have to conduct the cleaning. The library, we're gonna let rest.
Do they actually let, like, vomit with, with toxic fog? I mean, how do they clean it?
They're not cleaning, they are disinfecting.
Okay, just one.
Kate, Kate, it's, it's. Kate, it's a spray that they use, like a Wagner, a Wagner spray gun. And they just spray the whole surface area. They spray the phones, the countertops. And it dries in like 10 minutes and then it's done.
Wish we had our own. Okay.
It's the same thing you see.
If I could go back in time, I'd start a business, but.
Yeah. It's like you see on TV when they show you when they spray it, they were spraying in China. They go in with them suits and they just spray everything. And like Larry says, it dries in 10 minutes.
Okay.
So let me just try to summarize this so we can move on. But, so here's what we're looking at. Either, one choice is we put this, the remainder of this work off indefinitely. Uh, choice number two is we get the work done on the date, May 29th, which is a Friday. Nobody's back in the offices until Monday, so we'd be able to get the cleaning done on Saturday. However, if we did that, we'd be paying $700 for the cleaning service. So to me, I might be missing something, but to me, those are the two options. So what's the Board in favor of, uh, of the one or the other?
Well, my, my question would be, if you got it done because we had a contractor go in there, what's gonna happen and what's the theory with the Town Hall work is, say we open up in the middle of June, we can't be spraying every single week because we had different people in there. It's gotta come to a time where you're gonna have to stop spraying.
Right.
And, and I don't wanna say move on, but we have to do a timeline here.
So let me throw a wrench, hold on just a sec. I just thought of this. Let me throw a wrench into this thing. As I, I'm, I'm so talented at in these meetings and I get us all screwed up. But, um, Diane, there's one individual doing this, right?
Are we talking about the, the fog?
No, not the fog, the actual labor, the work.
Well, he, there's two guys that are in, that have been coming all the time. There are two people, two workers.
Would, would they be, and again, this is crazy, uh, would they be willing to go take a test and show us proof that they don't have COVID-19?
I have no idea. And if they take. And if they take the test on Thursday, they could have it on Friday, so...
They could.
You know.
So, I think what, I think what Larry's saying is at some point, we have to... What, what we've been doing here is we've been assuming that these workers have COVID-19 or have come in contact with people who have had COVID-19. They're asymptomatic, whatever. So, at some point, is it, is it May twenty-ninth? Is that the point? At some point, we have to say, you know, where risks are taken every day, uh, when we go to the supermarket, do we wanna keep doing this? That's, I think, Larry, I think that's the question you're asking.
What, when do you have any degree? Another way of looking at it is, I just had a appliance delivered. So, I had two delivery men come to my home to bring in a refrigerator and take out the old one. So, in order for the delivery personnel to bring the refrigerator into my home, I had to answer two questions. Has anyone in the household tested positive? And has anyone had symptoms within the last two weeks? That was it. The delivery men wore gloves and masks when they came into the home. I would think, is it possi-, do these two men wear masks and gloves when they come in to do the work?
At the library today, they did not.
Okay, 'cause I'm thinking it would be easier to get them to wear masks and gloves than it would be to get them to get, be tested for COVID. And to ask those two questions. Or even the third question of, have you had a fever? Or do you have a fever over a hundred? And, you know what I mean?
Well, I, I think the general, the whole thesis here has been, uh, these guys are COVID-19 positive, and they're gonna have contact with surfaces and leave it on the surfaces. And it's gonna last until workers come back in. And, you know, that contact could come, I believe, if I'm paying attention properly. Even with masks and gloves, that contact could still happen.
I'm just gonna point out, in June, when it, whenever there's a reopening, there's gonna be partitions, and the girls, the women there will be prepared for things. So, we, we put out a thing that people who enter should wear masks, et cetera. I just think, right now, regardless of what the governor says, we have, I think, a two-hundred percent increase in cases. We have more cases now than we did when we were careful. I just don't think it's right not to, he, I think with this particular instance moving forward, we could differently. If he's gonna go, they're gonna go in there and do the work, we have to clean up afterwards. It's not fair to the people in town hall. And then, the next juncture, when we have a time to set up, and we have partitions, and everyone's thought about it, then you, you know, there's a different protocol. Or, what's the other option? We wait, and we just have them come in right before there's a partial reopening, and clean that one more time and call it a day? What, was that that other option?
But, well, to Larry's point is, so then, then we do that, we open, so we clean it right before we open. So, if they've done the work before we open, we've cleaned before they opened, we open,
Right.
And we have a thousand people come through the town hall in two weeks to we clean again.
Yeah, we're not gonna have that happen. I mean, I don't believe we're gonna be voting on having a thousand people come in, but we had discussed-
Yes, but it only takes one person.
It could happen.
It only takes one person, whether it's one or a thousand coming through.
Right, but when they reopen, right, we're having partitions, and we're gonna have to decide how it's done. They're gonna be asked questions before they come in, probably like they're doing in certain restaurants. We can create policy that will make it safer for the people in town hall at that time, without smoking it with, you know, whatever, using the machines from China.
So, I, I guess I, I guess I'm leaning, I'm leaning towards, let's put this off until right before we reopen.
That would save money.
I'm in agreement with that.
Can I ask a quick question? This is Diane.
Go ahead.
I can ask this of Larry and Trish. Would the portion of having to fog the building, would that be covered under the Gopher grant? 'Cause we normally would not have to do that.
I'm gonna say the original fogging would have, would be covered, but since we hired a contractor to come in, and now you want it cleaned again, we could put, we could put in for it, definitely. But whether they're gonna flag that one, I'm not sure. So, if we say we, we flogged it because we had our workers in there, and then right before the opening, we flogged it again, uh, it probably wouldn't have an issue. But if, I mean, if, if I, if we just put it in as a fogger, they're gonna wonder why you flogged it. Well, we had the fire alarm technician in there. So, you had two guys in there, and you decided to spend eight hundred dollars to fog. Um, you know what? If, if, it probably just needs one more fogging. If, if the rest of the board wants to do it after these guys leave, let them do their work and leave, and then we just do, continue with the cleaning, like we're doing at the PD and the fire department. We're not having any issues over there, and we have guys in and out of there all the time. We can do it that way. But we can definitely put it in and see what happens. 'Cause this would be the what, second one, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so it probably would be covered. It, I thought it was the third.
Yeah, it would be the third one.
Would be the third.
Yeah, so, I'm, I mean, we could put it in, and we, and we can try it. They're not gonna slap our hand or, or do anything like that. They'll just say no, but we can definitely put in for it.
All right, so, let's, um, let's poll the board just so we can move on here. Um, Charlie, what are you leaning towards? Putting it off indefinitely or, or doing it on May twenty-ninth with a cleaning right after? Not a disinfecting right after?
Actually, I'm in agreement with Larry. Let's just do it one more time.
Okay. Kate, how are you leaning?
Um, I would definitely do it one more time when you want, either now or before we open. I can go either way, as long as they're done.
Well, can you pick one, though? Can you, like, tonight? Can you pick one? So, are we?
I just wanted to... No, you, keep going around.
Okay, so Lisa, how are you leaning?
Uh, one lot's cleaned just before we open. So, if we put it off, we put it off, but just, uh, one lot's cleaned before we open.
So, Kate, here we go. So, Charlie and Larry are, uh, let's just do it on that date in May and clean it. Lisa and I are both on the, let's just put it off indefinitely, do it right before we open, clean right bef-, disinfect right before we open. So, which one do you have, Kate?
It, it does, guy, it doesn't really matter when you do it, because the minute you do it, that one person out of the million could walk in there and have it. So, it's not gonna matter, whether you do it on May twenty-ninth or June fifteenth.
Right, I, I tend to agree with you, Larry, but I think what our workers are looking for is they know that the contractors were in there on Friday. They want peace of mind that the cleaning was done before they returned to the office.
And that's why I said I'm, I'm good with the May twenty-ninth cleaning, that's fine.
Okay, so you and Charlie are both there?
Unless something else happens, then we have to do another cleaning. That's why I'd rather put it off until we open, just before we open.
Matt, Matt, I'll put it off until we open.
Okay, okay.
That's what I am.
So, I'm gonna, so let's do it as a motion. Okay, let's do a motion, everybody can vote. So, I'm gonna move that we delay indefinitely, 'cause we don't know when we're gonna open. So, we, uh, delay the rest of the life safety work indefinitely until we have a clearer picture of when the town hall is reopening.
Second.
Seconded by Charlie. All right, Lisa, how do you vote?
Aye.
Uh, Larry?
So, Matt, does the motion say you're not gonna bring in those contractors, correct?
Uh, correct, indefinitely.
Okay, aye.
Okay, Larry's an aye. Kate?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
And Matt's an aye, so that's unanimous. So, Diane, uh, you're clear then on what you're gonna do?
Yep, I just, yep, I will cancel it, and let, you can let me know when you wanna have it done.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
So, on the, somebody, go ahead.
Yeah, Diane, can you just, uh, put a reminder on your calendar to bring it up again when we start discussing the actual opening of the town hall again?
When, when we have a clearer date. Um, okay, so, anything else COVID-19 related?
Excuse me, Chairman Matt, I have a question. This is Terry.
Go ahead, Terry.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to know, uh, what should my timeframe be when I visit the library next? Uh, my next anticipated date would be next Thursday. So, is that something that I should do or should not do?
So, I'm gonna put that out to the EMD people. What's the, uh, what's the rule of thumb? I, I understand it's three days on surfaces.
Right, so, if you're going, if you're going next week, you're gonna be fine.
Okay.
Um, and you, you need to call the fire department tomorrow, 'cause you do have some violations at that library that need to be taken care of before you open.
Oh, oh, my goodness, okay.
Nothing, nothing serious, but just a phone call, and we'll explain.
Okay, I'll call the fire depart-, okay, I will. Thank you.
All right, good, all right.
All right, thanks. I wa-, I wanted to, uh, very quickly, hopefully very quickly, talk about, um, when we first started doing these electronic meetings. Once again, we thought this might only last a short time, but it seems like we're doing it longer. Uh, we're using a conference call line which has its, uh, issues. Uh, I have come into possession of a full Zoom account for myself that I'm paying for, for business use. I'd like to see if the board would be interested on Tuesday night, so not the Monday meeting, the COVID meeting, but the Tuesday regular meeting, to experiment with Zoom. So, we have a little under a week to get everybody, uh, set up with a Zoom account. We go on with Zoom, we give a shot Tuesday night, it works, we get a town account. If it doesn't work, no harm, no foul, we continue with the phone calls. We could also have this conference call number available for anyone who can't get on Zoom or doesn't wanna get on Zoom. So, what's the board think of experimenting with it next Tuesday?
Good idea.
I like the idea.
That requires a laptop, correct?
Uh, laptop, iPad, uh, iPhone.
Yeah.
Any device, really. Yeah.
Yeah, I have Zoom on my, my phone. Couldn't hear you, Kate.
You don't need to do the video portion.
No, you can off-out on that.
Yeah, it's just a, uh, there's a video mute button, but, um...
And did it, they fixed up dirty issues that was happening, that's all better now?
Okay. So, Diane, you and I will be in touch on that offline, and we'll, we'll get, I'll, I'll be hosting, but I'll need you to share.
I do think if we're gonna do the Zoom thing, um, we should, um, do the video as well, because we are representing the town, so...
Yeah, I think the board should be on video, myself, yeah, would tend to agree with that. But if you're, if you're a shy resident, um, you don't necessarily have to show your face.
Yeah, no, I'm not talking about, uh, the residents, I'm talking about the board members.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I think all of us are okay with that. Um, okay, I wanted to switch gears, and Shanti has a, go ahead, Trish, was it?
You're probably gonna talk about what I was gonna talk about. It's still COVID-related about the temporary outdoor seating, so I'll let you take it away.
Oh, okay, no, I wasn't talking about that, so you take it away.
Okay. So, because, uh, uh, you know, obviously, the nicer weather is coming, um, and we are concerned about, you know, only a couple places for outdoor seating. And I think Shanti sent to the board, um, a sample of what could be used for, um, a temporary outdoor seating permit request. So, I'm just tossing this out there so that we don't wait too long to have the board kinda look at it, critique it, or whatever, and maybe we could discuss it if Shanti's all, all right with it, like, at the Monday night call, because that way we could get this thing going, uh, and start do, using this as our temporary outdoor seating permit. And, and the police and the fire should look at it, too, if they haven't seen it.
That, Trish, that has to get taken care of before Monday, 'cause Monday they're starting.
Okay. All right.
So, this was, um, this was kinda why I mentioned in a couple meetings ago, uh, there's only about three places in town that could qualify, I believe, if I'm correct. So, if we, if we can reach out, you know, in whatever way to the three places, and see what they're planning, and that way, we could, we could do it on a case-by-case basis, you know? If, uh, rather than setting up a process when we're a small town, we wouldn't have to do that.
Matt, I did meet with, I met with the hen house last week, and I also had, uh, Bob Leverone on the phone. And what I described to him, and what I described to the owner, we should be good over there.
Okay, sounds good.
They have outside seating.
Yeah, but I do think that we should consider, um, seriously, the, getting a permit and having it signed and agreed to.
Yeah, and that's, so that's where I was going with that. Now that we know they have the intention, and they've taken steps, then I think we should use what the example Trish has and, uh, have Shanti contact them to go through the necessary steps.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to speak for a minute. This is Shanti.
Go ahead.
Um, so, where I, you know, I'm not in Newton every day. I would recommend, and hopefully that, you know, the fire chief or the chief's department would, or even the health officer would be able to kinda spearhead this. But I did send out to the board, and I apologize if some members were missed, then were not on my email contacts. Um, a, a template that we're using in Stratum that we had our town attorney review for content, and we went back and forth a few times, and we kinda landed on this. It's, you know, it's a Word document, so, you know, very easy to wordsmith, to, uh, accommodate Newton. Um, and so, if, if somebody else, another department would be willing to reach out to the, uh, to the restaurants, if it's even applicable. You know, you mentioned it's a small town, um, but the, the beautiful thing, I suppose, about, you know, some sort of a formal policy or a signed permit, it means that if anybody else traveling through the town, or any residents, happen to see outdoor seating, and they're concerned because they're not up to date on the governor's orders, um, and they approach the town, the town can simply say, "Yeah, we have a permit here, we're complying with the latest stay-at-home two-point-oh, um, section C", you know, so on and so forth. And they're, and they're maintaining their, their distancing, and they're complying with that order in its entirety. Or, the complaint says that they're not, and then, since they've signed this agreement that gives us the authority, not that we need the authority, but a little, a cleaner path to go over there and enforce. So, for what it's worth, that's my two cents.
Okay. And, you know, what I'm thinking here is, I'm, I'm thinking only the departments that are necessary to go over there. If, if, um, you know, the fire chief goes over, or Larry goes over as EMD, or whatever, and feeds the information to Shanti or whatever, like, I'm fine with that. I just think, I think we need to go through the steps, and the beauty of it is, is this is gonna be a one-time thing, 'cause, like I said, we only have three possibilities that I can think of in town. So, we're gonna do this once, and then they're gonna be ready to go. It's not like we're gonna have, uh, you know, weekly requests for this. So, what's the board think?
Not a problem.
Anybody else?
Yeah, no issues here.
Okay. So, so what do we wanna do then? Have, have Larry and Shanti and Bob Leverone just contact each other offline and do what they need to do, and...
That's, I'll call those guys tomorrow, and I'll, um, get that memo, and I'll talk to the chief Alcaldino and, uh, Chief Jewett, and have, just have his guys keep an eye on it when they just driving by, so...
Yeah. Yep.
I, I still think we should have a permit, even if it doesn't have a fee associated with it, because then it ensures that the businesses are agreeing to be in compliance with the governor's orders, whatever they may be at the time, and it makes it enforceable for us to stop them if they're not doing it properly.
And I think that's what we're,
I think that's what we're doing.
That's what we're saying.
Okay, well, I, I just heard the, the, that EMD and fire and building inspector are gonna be working off on themselves, but I didn't hear that they were going to be, um, finalizing this permit, and if there is a fee, then the board of selectmen have to make the decision on that.
Yeah, I would, I would say, you're correct Lisa, I think what my intention was, is to get these parties working together to get a permit, and then as far as the fee goes, um, me personally, as I sit here tonight, I, I would, uh, be in favor of no fee for the,
Me too.
For any of the three in question, cause,
Yep.
They're only, they're the only three we have, and, um, you know, it's probably only one of them is probably gonna do it, but what's everybody else think?
I'm in agreement with you Matt.
No fee is fine.
Agreed.
Yeah, and I, that's why I mentioned it, I have no problem with,
Yeah.
And, and I was going to say, no fee for the same reason, it's, so I'm okay with them dropping it up, but they have to send us what the permit is going to be, right, so that we're informed as well?
Yep.
And then they can just move forward with issuing the permit?
Shanti, is there a copy of the permit in that email you sent?
Yes.
Okay, we'll use that one.
Yeah, I have no issue with that.
All right.
Yeah, I looked it over, I, I'm good with the sample that he sent us.
All right, so, moving off of COVID-19, everybody okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and I think while we still have Shanti on the line, um, I think this is what we had scheduled, he's been contacted by Sanborn Regional, is, speaking of permits, I believe they're looking for a permit for the work at the middle school, is that right, Shanti?
That is correct, and this, you know, before I issued the permit, I wanted to discuss whether or not the select board wanted to, you know, collect a, a permit fee for that project, so the, the, it's four hundred and eighty thousand dollar project, a full-price permit fee, with what we would charge anyone else, would be three thousand four hundred and fifty dollars, so, I know sometimes, um, boards can be split on whether or not they wanna do a full waiver, if they wanna do a partial waiver, um, or if they simply want to assess the fee based off of, uh, actual time, uh, administrative, um, and also administrative review and onsite inspections, or if you simply wanna just not charge anything at all.
Okay, so what's the board thinking, um, I could insert a joke in here, but I won't do it.
Uh, I, actually Matt, what I was thinking was, what did the school do for us when we needed to use school facilities? They charged us for what?
Uh, they gave us a little discount, but they charged us for the custodian cleanup.
Yeah, but remember this is,
Right, so not for the use, but for the personnel, uh, personnel's time, right?
Yep, th- there you go, yep.
But Matt,
So I, I'm willing to do the same when it comes to the permit for the work at the middle school, which would be the time of the inspectors to do the pre-inspection and whatever other work they need to do.
Larry was trying to get in there, Larry?
Isn't this a private company though, it's not our district that's doing the work?
Good question. Shanti?
So, yeah, sure, so to answer that question, of course, the contractor, you know, the builder construction at a Plastow will actually be doing the work, but I mean, that would stand to reason, whenever you have a, a school renovation, the school itself isn't doing the work, someone else is, but, um, uh, what, what I've seen historically with other districts in other towns, is that the, um, the builder does not carry the cost of the permit, and they pass that along to the district, so that if there are any fees assessed, because they don't wanna, they don't wanna get involved with it, so they go, here, here's our line item cost for the job, any permits, um, will have to be paid for by the district, um, you know, so,
Thanks Shanti, if I could just jump in, I think we understand that part of it, I think what Larry is saying is, I believe the school is contracting with a private charter school?
Yes, they have.
The charter school is the one benefiting from this work, is that what you're saying, Larry?
Right, so I thought they, once this company takes over, the town doesn't own that building anymore, correct?
No, 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 the school district isn't selling the building, they're leasing the building, the school still maintains ownership.
This is the one in junction, Larry.
Right.
The one out back.
Yep. Yep.
Yep.
So, in a way, to answer your question Larry, it's, there's gonna be a benefit to a private organization, but it's still gonna be, uh, owned and leased out by Sanborn.
Okay.
Which will affect our taxes in one way or another.
Yeah, Chief Alcindino?
It, ju, just so the boards are aware, when I met with the company, they were clearly told that they had to pull a permit and what the, uh, fee was, the hundred and fifty dollars, I believe is what the fire department fee was, they were obligated to pay the fee, so, ju, just putting it out there, we charge the full amount, uh, just letting you know, so if you guys decide to change something on the town side, the fi, the fire department has already explained, it's full price, we don't change permit fees unless the board of selectmen have made a decision to change a permit fee.
Fair enough. So, uh, what's the board feeling like?
You want my opinion?
Go ahead Charlie.
Okay, I'm in for charging the whole fee.
Okay.
I don't wanna cut it nothing.
Okay, and Lisa, you were saying, you know, charge for the labor essentially, but not the, um,
I, I was saying, I was willing to do that, however, um, one way or the other, it's still going to fall back on the school district, now likely whatever they get for permit fees, they'll charge against the charter school, whatever the case may be, so, and I have not heard through scuttlebutt or any other means, that anyone on the school board is looking for a discount either, so,
Right, right.
I say we go with the regular fees, um, as usual, and then if they wanna discount, or if wanna try to get a discount, then they need to come to us.
Right.
Oh wow, the mount, the mountain coming to Mohammed, so,
Yeah.
It's about time.
So, I swear I wasn't gonna make a joke, but, um, okay, Kate, where, what are you saying, what are you thinking?
I, I think it would be okay to, why would we not charge a fee again, just to be nice?
Yeah.
Just to be, uh, one team.
I kinda feel like this, after what Chief Alcindino said, we should, it's not a huge fee, charge the fee.
Right.
Um, Larry, where, where are you?
Kate, that's not, Kate, that's not the whole fee of a hundred and fifty dollars, I think it was a couple thousand, right Shanti?
Yep, it's thirty-two hundred.
Thirty-two hundred.
Three thousand four hundred and fifty dol, three, three thousand four hundred and fifty dollars would be the full price, and if I could interject and throw one more scenario in here, recently we had a cooperative middle school expansion in Stratum, and, and I brought this to the board, and the board told me that I needed to get a formal waiver request from the applicant, so I had the applicant submit a formal waiver request, the board reviewed it, and decided because it was a cooperative middle school, that we would offer them a discount relative to the number of students in our, in our town, so we gave them a twenty-five percent discount, is how it worked out with those guys, but all these districts are different, the structures aren't all the same, uh, and that, that's why, that's why I'm asking you guys this.
Understood. Larry, where are you leaning?
Um, well, you know, they've been closed for two months now, and I haven't seen any kickback from them as far as not paying the tollies, so, I, I'm good with the full, with the full price.
There's still time Larry, there's still time.
They may have been closed, but they're still operating Larry.
Um, so I'm going to move that we charge the full fee, anybody wanna second?
I second.
Thank, yeah.
Okay, so Lisa's the second, Larry, how do you vote?
Aye.
Uh, Kate?
Aye.
Uh, did I forget, Lisa?
Aye.
Did I ask Charlie yet, Charlie?
Not yet, but I'm an aye.
Okay, so I'm an aye, so that's unanimous, and, um, we'll go from there, if we hear from anybody, that'll be great, be nice to talk to somebody over there, um, but I think we're, Shanti, you good with us then on that?
Uh, yeah, I'm good, I'm good with, with this, and what I'll do is I'll make note and reference, um, this date for, for this particular meeting, you know, if somebody should ask, and of course the minutes will always be available to reflect the decision, and I'll, I'll go ahead and, uh, issue the permit with a full, full amount, and we'll wait to see if we, if we get any, uh, any feedback.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you guys.
Thanks, uh, agenda-wise Diane, other than approving minutes, what else?
Um, I, I, that's it, but I do have one more thing I just forgot to tell you on my update with the library.
Sure.
Okay, I apologize, I, I just caught my note here, um, today, on the heat, uh, the heat detectors changing to smoke detectors, uh, we had budgeted for nine hundred and seventy-five dollars, it came up to a little over one thousand, so it came up, there was an extra forty-four dollars and forty cents, and that was due to, uh, some, we call them back boxes, that they needed to install, and they had some wiring issues that he resolved, and an inspection that had to be done, so that's what the increase of the forty-four dollars and, uh, forty cents would be.
Okay, we have money coming in from the school now, so we should be good.
We can offset that, yeah, I'm just letting you know that's what it was.
Okay, thank you.
Other than that, you have the, uh, minutes, the public minutes and non-public for May fifth and May sixth, if you're okay with those.
Anybody wanna make a motion?
What were those dates Diane?
May fifth and sixth.
All right, so I move to approve the public minutes for May fifth and May sixth.
Second.
And there's non-public with both of those.
Wanna amend Lisa?
I will amend to approve the public and the non-public for May fifth and May sixth.
Nice, second again.
Seconded by Charlie, we're gonna go around the horn, uh, Kate, how do you vote?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Uh, Lisa?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Matt's an aye, that's unanimous, anything, um, else on the agenda tonight?
I, I have one thing that's not on the agenda, but it, um, just came up, um, I understand that we've been having some, um, difficulties with getting water delivery lately, and I had reached out to another water company that's local, and got some price quotes from this company, which, calculating based on what we spent last year and what the current pricing is, we would actually have a thirty-five percent savings if we went with this other company, there's no contract, um, or agreement, there will be a two-year price lock on cooler rentals and water bottle pricing.
Right.
And I don't know if we need to have a motion or not, or if the town administrator can just switch water companies.
I would recommend a motion, because we're gonna have to reach out to the other company to stop delivery.
Um, if you wanna call that a motion Lisa, I'll second.
Okay, yes, so I will move to authorize the town administrator to change water delivery, um, company to Crystal Hills out of Kingston.
Um, so I'm gonna second that for tonight, so we'll go around the horn here, Kate, how do you vote?
Aye, sorry, it's muted, aye.
Okay, Larry?
Aye.
Uh, Charlie?
I'm gonna vote aye, because I know the people.
Okay, and, uh, Lisa?
Aye.
And Matt's an aye, so unanimous.
Yay.
Uh, keep that water flowing, uh, anything else for tonight?
Matt, I have one thing.
Nancy?
The, uh, assessor will be printing the warrant in the next few days, and I think when I spoke to you last, we were discussing the selectmen actually signing the warrant, we can't use electronic signatures, is that correct?
Um, which, which warrant is, I don't, I don't recall it being listed in the, um, in the governor's order, but we could, maybe Nancy, if you wanna talk to Trish, maybe you guys could read it and see if, uh, it's on there.
Well, yep, we can do that, we were discussing,
When would it have to be signed?
We were discussing at our next meeting about a contract that needed to be signed, I believe you said that the selectmen all have to come in and sign that one?
Yeah, the, I, I'm pretty, um, pretty sure that one's gonna have to be signed by all of us.
So I can try and coordinate the two, maybe when you come in, you can sign them both at the same time, cause I don't know if Mary Jo will print the warrant if we don't have the signatures.
So, I believe, um, one way we could do this is if, if there's a signature page, you could email to one of us, and any of us could volunteer to be the first, and they could sign the signature page and kinda leave it on their door, and then one of us could pick it up, and, so, um, I'm comfortable going into the town hall to sign things, as long as I'm the only one in there. Um, so, those of us that are comfortable with that, we could continue to do that, as long as we have our designated time, if people are uncomfortable doing that, maybe they could be the one to print it out, sign it in their house, tape it to their door, uh, so we can do that all off, we can do it all offline Nancy.
Okay, cause I was gonna say, if people wanted, if people wanted to go to the town hall, they could go in Diane's side door, we could have the table right there with the warrant on it, and they don't even have to come into the room.
Yeah. That's what I would.
If everybody's, Larry with that?
Is there a, um, same kinda lock on that door?
It's, it's the combo lock, yeah, it's the code lock.
Okay.
Yep, so, yeah, I'll have the table right to the left of the door, so that way you can open the door, you can just sign it and scoot right back out.
Sounds great.
Okay.
All right, so, anything else?
Nope, that's it.
All right, thank you, anything else from anybody going on us? I love that motion, is there a second? All right, all in favor, right? Okay, good.
Yep.
Uh, everybody have a good night, we'll be back together Monday night, so,
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, thank you.
Have a good night.